Good evening. Welcome to this, the first meeting of April of the Torrington City Council. It is amazing to see all of these faces out here. Typically, I have to look at Attorney Eddington, Mr. Oster.
Lucky you.
Our Director of Public Works. You know, this is much improvement. Thank you. Thank you all for coming. We'll call the meeting to order before we go too far. I want to thank Ryan and Grant Keth from KGOS, K E R M. They put us on YouTube, and if you want to watch the Torrington City Council meeting anytime that you're not able to be here, all you have to do is go to KGOS Sports, and you'll find us there. They're also at ninety-nine point nine FM. So, thank you, Ryan. I want to thank Tyler Martineau from the Torrington Telegram for also covering us. Appreciate it. And with that, we'll move ahead, and Lynette, would you do the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the law of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off with the action items. Here it is, April already. It seems that winter has flown by without as much as a whimper. Some minor snow and wind events, but nothing really too serious. The city of Torrington is now hiring for seasonal work. Applicants can apply on the city's website or at City Hall. All of the city's sports fields begin to have heavy use at this time of the year. The sports fields at the sports complex and at Jordan Park are not to be used as a dog park. No animals are allowed on the sports fields during non-game events. We've also been experiencing vandalism and inappropriate use at the sports facility. If you see any suspicious behavior there or anywhere, please report it to the Torrington Police Department. There are cameras, and people who are identified as violating city ordinances will be held accountable. COVID situation here in Goshen County remains pretty stable, and in fact, has been in steady decline over the last two months or so. Our total COVID-related deaths in the county stand at fifty-seven. That number is up one from what I reported about three weeks ago. Community Hospital shows that there are zero COVID-related patients, and that continues to be good news. We continue to encourage our people, if you've not yet done so, to get vaccinated and boosted. I've not yet heard of any plans for another booster clinic at this point. Please contact Goshen County Public Health or your current health care provider for information. The redistricting bill that I reported three weeks ago was allowed to become a law without the governor's signature. Going forward with the plan as it stands now, Goshen County will be split into two districts, a much better representation than the previous three and sometimes four districts of past redistricting projects. All of the municipalities in Goshen County will be represented by the same representative. The area north of Highway twenty-six, the Highway twenty-six municipalities, anyway, will be in a separate district and include Niobra and Western Counties. There is some speculation that this plan will find its way to the state Supreme Court before all of the concerns that have been raised will get resolved. We've all been concerned about the legislature's actions on the ARPA money that will soon become available. We have yet to be informed how much, when, and how to apply for the federal money that was appropriated by the legislature and designated for use by local governments. We here at the city of Torrington are prepared with several shovel-ready projects around the shelf and ready to go, and that money, as soon as that money becomes available. The state has received one point zero eight billion dollars, which the legislature divided up among the many entities looking for infrastructure money. Legislature appropriated fifty million for local government support and fifty million for water and sewer projects, which will be administered through the State Land and Investment Board. Municipalities will then be able to apply for that money through the sub-board as they have in years past. The city of Torrington is prepared to put this to use immediately. Direct distribution money from the state will provide a minor increase to the biannual amount received by the city of Torrington. We've received word from the National Arbor Day Foundation that once again, the city of Torrington has been identified as Tree City USA. Your continued efforts to take care of the many trees and to replace those that have died or have been damaged by winds and weather, it's important in making our city a pleasant place to live. On Friday, April eighth, at ten thirty AM, there will be an Arbor Day tree planting ceremony held at the sports complex, where area fourth-grade students will participate. Having this annual celebration reminds us of how important trees are to our environment and to this community. The city of Torrington and representatives of the other four Goshen County municipalities continue to work on a Sixth Penny Initiative. This morning, we presented accurate costs for the projects that we want to put before the voters through the commissioners. Commissioner Ellis also presented some suggested products the county designated for his proposal. Once again, the commissioners delayed providing a decision that we've been requesting since last September. At this point, we're suggesting that the issue go before the voters in a special election in May of two thousand twenty-three. This past week, I had the opportunity to answer some letters from area third-grade students who are working to find ways to keep our community free from trash. I often answer letters from students from elementary grades all the way through college about the workings of municipal government, and I always appreciate those teachers who teach the importance of civic involvement and civic responsibility to their kids. These kinds of opportunities make being a mayor a very rewarding, rewarding experience. And that's the information for tonight. Next item is approval of the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the three fifteen twenty-two city council meeting as published. Let me move to it for... Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Are there any considered or any further discussion? There are none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? Thank you. We have approved the consent agenda. Before we approve the agenda, there is an amendment. It's rather minor, but it's an amendment. Please remove item eleven from the, oh, excuse me, item twelve from the agenda. We don't quite have enough information to follow up on that, so that item will probably come up at the next council meeting. Okay? Other than that, there are no changes to the agenda.
I'd move to approve the agenda with...
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as amended. Further discussion? There are none. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose? We are ready to move into information items. Before I go that far, you probably noticed Councilman Kelly is absent, and he is excused. He's visiting family in Washington. I don't believe we have any in the public forum. So, we're ready to move on. From information items, we have people from Wyoming Child and Family Development, developmental disabilities, local match presentation. We have Danielle Wondercheck, and...
Heidi Lee.
I'm sorry, Heidi. I met you twice today and still can't get it right. Come on up.
Okay, so you've received a letter from us, and Heidi does have the handouts for you. Really, this presentation is just an opportunity for us to be back out after two years of just being able to send you nothing but paper and remind you of Wyoming Child and Family Development's presence in Goshen County. We've been here for fifty-seven years. We provide a developmental disabilities program that has served tens of thousands of children in Wyoming, and we have that right here in Goshen County. We're required to do presentations to our local governments every single year to request support in either cash or in-kind donations, and we have a wonderful, wonderful partnership with the city, and we've had ongoing relationships throughout the county and community for all fifty-seven of those years that we've been operating. So, primarily, we're saying a huge thank you to what you've done for the last almost six decades for Wyoming Child and Family Development and informing you of the great work that we continue to do, especially in the developmental disabilities. The data has been presented, and I don't need to read it off to you. In the, in the letters, you kind of can see what we're doing each and every day and each and every year for Goshen, right here in Goshen County.
I, um, I get the opportunity every time when I leave the building to go out past the playground, and so I get to see the different teachers and the yellow kids, and some of them yell at me. Some of it's positive, and, uh, but anyway, it's always entertaining to see them.
They're the little, little tikes. I'll bet you they're pretty happy to see you. They like people.
They're fun to see out there. I appreciate that. Also, I used to work in Wyoming Family Literacy Situation, where we dealt with the same kinds of kids that you do and so on. And I know how important it is that you do the testing and screening for, you know, special programs and special treatment those kids get. So, it'd be a very difficult situation if we didn't have an entity like you guys doing it. So, we really appreciate the fact that you're doing that. So, keep up the good work. We appreciate the association also. It's good for our building. It's good for our staff. Good to see it.
It's a great partnership all the way around.
Counsel, anybody?
No.
Just keep up the good work.
I would, I would just add that this is an amazing program. They've done, as Danielle said, they've, they've been involved with the community for many, many years, and I've always been very supportive. I was on the board for several years, and, and I'm happy to be able to, to participate in this. So, thank you.
Kate?
As the center coordinator at the Torrington Learning Center, I would like to extend the invitation for any of you to come up and get a tour of our building and meet our staff and see our program in action. Law enforcement, I would encourage you as well. Officer Sandland has been in our building more than once, so he can attest that we're a pretty fun place to hang out with. So, please come and just spend a little bit of time with us. We would love to have you.
Heidi's a great host.
They can always use in-kind.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, the next item is, is a special thing. Not all of us get the opportunity sometimes to thank those people out there who do things that most of us can't do. We're going to, we're going to honor some people tonight who have saved a life, and that's a pretty remarkable, pretty remarkable thing to be able to say that you've done. At this point, I'm going to turn that over to Chief Johnson, and we'll go from there.
If we could get all of our first responders coming up, if you can, Darren and Sid and Paul and Yara. Is Denise here? I'm sorry, I don't know. I've only met Denise on the phone, so I don't know if she's here yet. But if not, the rest of you, if you could kind of line up here so everybody can see you. Great. We appreciate it. Thanks, guys. It won't be perfect, but we can squeeze as many folks in up there in that corner as we can.
Don't be shy.
Mayor and council, thank you so much for giving us a few minutes tonight. We wanted to take a moment to recognize a member of our community and some of our first responders for saving the life of Bruce Hacker on March twenty-first in the Torrington Post Office. It's a pretty cool story of teamwork, and it's one that's worth telling and celebrating a little bit. So, at approximately four twenty-five PM, Bruce was in the Torrington Post Office when he experienced a serious medical event that left him without any signs of life. A member of the community, Ms. Denise Johnson, was in the post office with him. She immediately began CPR, and another person called nine-one-one to ask for help. Dispatcher Heather Kraus took the nine-one-one call, and in just a little bit over a minute, she got all the information that she needed to get the call for service entered and to figure out what help was required, and she started sending help as quickly as she could. Sergeant Paul Kissler arrived on scene approximately one minute later, and in that minute, he continued Denise's efforts by immediately utilizing the AED in his vehicle to restart Bruce's heart. It took him about a minute and a half to get that accomplished. Officer Gomez arrived on scene at approximately the same time as Sergeant Kissler was utilizing the AED, and he also began to assist. EMS medics Darren Yates and Sid Castilla arrived on scene within a few seconds of the AED being utilized, and they, again, immediately began utilizing lifesaving efforts and beginning CPR. A short time later, Bruce was loaded into the ambulance with both Darren and Sid in the back to continue lifesaving treatment, while Officer Gomez did a fantastic chauffeur job and jumped in the front and drove the ambulance to the hospital so that the EMS staff could continue working on Bruce in the back. The staff in the emergency room continued those lifesaving efforts, and Bruce is, Bruce is still with us today. Bruce's wife, Dorothy, and his daughter Miranda are both with us this evening. Thank you so much for being here. Bruce is not able to make it tonight, but we're quite assured that he's with us in spirit, and we're looking forward to getting the chance to chat with him as he's finished with his medical treatment. We'd like to thank Denise and our first responders for their quick response, immediate action, and dedication in saving Bruce's life. So, thank you very much. We'd love to grab a couple of photos, if we could. Dorothy, Miranda, welcome to join us up here for photos.
Bruce isn't...
No pressure. No pressure.
I'm nowhere too good.
Try to get out of a splash, though.
Time to get a through, Bruce.
Yep. Very cool.
Again, thank you all. Amazing. Something to be very proud of, and something that the whole city of Torrington is proud of. Keep up the good work. We very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda, we're going to recognize some people who do an incredibly difficult job. Oftentimes, they're not thanked for it. Oftentimes, they're not appreciated for what they do, and we're going to try to highlight them a little bit tonight. Chief, you're on.
Get over this next few minutes as best you can to squeeze into the same space. Mayor and council, again, thank you for giving us a little more of your time tonight. National Public Safety Telecommunications Week is coming up upon us from April tenth to the seventeenth, and we wanted to make sure that we took a minute tonight to be fully appreciative of our communications team and the amazing work that they do. Just so everybody knows who we're talking about, let me do a quick round of introductions. We have Ms. Bailey Goulart, our communications supervisor; Ms. Brenda Miller, communications officer; Ms. Hillary McNeese, communications officer; Ms. Lacey Ochoa, communications officer; Ms. Heather Kraus, who we've already met, communications officer; and then, of course, Ms. Tammy Kearns and Terri Shinost, who are both community service officers, and ever-so-bashful, but both community service officers who have served this agency for many, many years, and they continue to serve, and they provide amazing support to the dispatch team. This group of ladies handles the public safety communications for our entire county. Every single person in this county who calls nine-one-one for help talks to one of these folks standing here in front of us today, and that's a pretty amazing thing. Just for a little bit of perspective, this team supports eight volunteer fire departments, five law enforcement agencies, four EMS services, all while handling records functions, processing critical paperwork, helping walk in customers, and a thousand other responsibilities that they somehow manage to do with ease and gracefulness that those of us that don't work in that office cannot even begin to understand. In the last year, they handled just under twenty-six-thousand incidents that were entered into our computer-aided dispatch and records management system. That averages out to about seventy per day. They handled almost nineteen thousand calls for service that required them to send a law enforcement officer, a fire department, or an EMS person to get that taken care of, and they handled almost seven thousand incidents all, all by themselves, without help from anybody else. You know, we live in a crazy world, and success is defined by a whole bunch of different things, but the way that we define success is by how we touch the lives of other people and how we help people that are desperately in need. And you seven ladies are some of the most successful folks I know, and thank you for what you do. We greatly appreciate you. So, thank you.
Delivering the flowers. Thank you.
Ladies, if you wouldn't mind hanging tight for a second out there, and, oh, you see, come and get a couple of... Hard to look at two cameras at once.
Thank you, ladies. Thank you, girls. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Be nice if we could do that every meeting for somebody. Good thing. All right, moving on to the action items. The first item tonight is a special event permit. Taryn Kilty with the Old Moose Mercantile LLC has requested a special event permit for an Old Moose Market Days event to be held on May seventh, two thousand twenty-two, from six AM to four PM in the public parking lot located at one nineteen East Twenty-first Avenue. Taryn's here. Would you come on up, Taryn? Thank you. Kind of explain to us basically what you want to do. I know very well that what you did last year was a great example for the community, and I got a feeling a lot of people are going to try to mirror it. So, we appreciate you doing it.
Thank you. I'm not sure that I want to follow what just happened, because that was so awesome. And here I am asking for a measly event permit for shopping, so that doesn't seem nearly as, as awesome as what just happened. So, but it was a fantastic time and turnout last year, and so last year, we had twenty-five vendors, and this year, we're looking at having sixty-plus vendors. So, it has really, yeah, it's really grown, and we never really want to turn anyone away. We only had to turn one away, and, and trust me, I think you would be okay with, with that choice. So, anyways, yeah, so there'll be five food trucks. We'll have live music again, but all in all, it'll be within the same parameters as we did last year. It'll look very similar, just a little more packed than last year. So, anyway...
Good enough. I know you worked with Chief Johnson quite a bit to get this arranged and so on. Chief, you got any comments for us?
This'll be great. Taryn's super organized. She knows what she's doing. We got a good plan. We're keeping it safe, and it's going to be a great event for the county.
Yep. I think we've worked out the blocking off of the streets and all that, so we should be in pretty good shape, and if it works out like it did last year, more power to you.
Perfect. Well, thank you. I always appreciate your guys' support. You've always been awesome for all my ideas, so...
Okay. Very good.
I have a question, if I could.
Yes, please.
So, I want to preface this.
So, I want to preface this. I absolutely support it. I think it's fantastic, and it's great that you're doing this. I had a discussion with Mr. Estes, which is always a little risky, but just in passing, it was mentioned, and it occurred to me that the theater, I think, is now open or will be open. Will there be a conflict between the sound, if they're running a matinee, and this?
Yeah, that's actually a great question. I did talk to Marie prior, and just letting her know, one, the parking situation because of, you know, the movie theater, and so she actually thought it was a great idea. She was thinking about even having it open. She wasn't planning on having a movie during that time, but just having a kind of an open house where people could come in and see the theater. So, I have been in close communication because that was the last thing I, you know, didn't want to do was, especially, you know, a new business opening and trying to, I know what it's like having expenses for just remodel and everything, so I definitely didn't want to, you know, put any hindrance in that plan. So, I have, like I said, been in close communication with her.
I should have known. Perfect.
Well, no, no. I love how you think I'm a very organized person, but I hate to say it. I'm like a ducks, you know, on the surface, but underneath I'm paddling like crazy. So...
Good enough. Counsel, I think we're ready to take action.
I would move to approve the special event permit for the Old Moose Mercantile's special event.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Councilman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the special event permit for Old Moose Mercantile's event on May 7th. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you.
Go for it. Good luck. Hope it goes well.
It's Taryn.
I get to be here this year.
I love this.
Okay, our next event is a special event permit also. Brandy Heiser with Two Horse Hospitality is requesting two special event permits for Home on the Range Anniversary Open House to be held on April 29th and April 30th from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. in front of 2016 Main Street. The applicant is requesting that the special event permit fees be reduced due to the fact that streets will not be blocked. Only two parking stalls will be blocked. Brandy is here. Thank you for coming, and go ahead.
This is a repeat event for the Home on the Range Open House. I bring my beverage trailer, and we parked in the two parking spots directly in front of the store, and we blocked those so patrons could safely come and get their lemonade from the trailer that is purchased by Home on the Range. So, and it's just in recognition. They give their customers a token for the drink of their choice. They bring it to the trailer, and we make it fresh for them.
I appreciate the pictures. I don't know who took the pictures.
I did, last year.
They're very flattering pictures.
Just, I think pictures help a lot, especially in my situation, trying to picture a horse trailer on Main Street serving drinks. So, I just would like to clarify something. Am I requesting one permit or two permits? Because I thought I did one last year that covered both days.
Why would you need two permits?
I just maybe...
For two parking lots? Maybe spots or something?
No, two days.
Two days.
Oh, yes. We did have that discussion last year, didn't we?
Yeah, it's two separate permits. You did it in one, but it's two different days, so technically two different permits.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
And a special event permit costs?
Normally, they're $200 per permit.
So, it'd be a total of $400.
Last year, she requested a reduction, and we waived 200 out of the 400.
Okay, okay. Counsel, what do you think? Chief, you got any comments, by the way?
Second. The reason for the permit is to cover our costs, but it's not to gouge someone, and I think we do need to probably be a little flexible with that. So...
Sure, and I understand that. There's not very many events that I attend and don't pay a fee.
Entertaining a motion one way or the other.
Well, I would move that we approve the special event permit for Brandy with a two-horse hospitality for Home on the Range Anniversary at a $200 permit fee.
Okay, we have a motion on the table from Councilman Kenny. Reduce the fee to $200. Is there a second?
And to clarify, that's 200 total, right?
Total, yes.
But I would second that motion.
Thank you. Councilman Patterson. Is there further discussion? Anything else you'd like to add?
I don't have anything else to add.
Okay.
Other than I'd like to see you there.
If there's no further discussion, we'll move to a vote. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Good luck.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have fun.
Okay, next item on the agenda. Item three is a proclamation for National Service Recognition Day. Attorney Eddington.
Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's counties, cities, travel governments are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cause-effective strategy to meet their needs, whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps senior participants address the most pressing challenges facing our communities from educating students for jobs of the 21st century to fighting the opioid epidemic to responding to natural disasters to supporting veterans and military families, whereas National Service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, whereas AmeriCorps and AmeriCorps senior participants, serving in more than 50,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being, whereas National Service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve, both through their direct service and by managing millions of additional volunteers, whereas National Service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions, leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact, and increase the return of taxpayer dollars, whereas National Service participants demonstrate commitment, dedication, patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors, whereas AmeriCorps shares a priority with leaders nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with the National League of Cities, the National Association of Counties, cities of service, and local leaders across the country for National Service Recognition Day on April 5th, 2022. Therefore, be it resolved that I, Randy L. Adams, Mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim April 5th, 2022 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of National Service in our community, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to get back to their communities.
Thank you, Attorney Eddington. Kind of to restate a little bit about what he said, this is really a day in which we want to try to honor volunteers. The people who are involved in AmeriCorps are typically seniors, people my age, who don't have anything else to do, and volunteer their time to serve their community. They work in all kinds of situations. I spoke to our museum director this morning about AmeriCorps volunteers possibly working at the museum. She doesn't have anybody doing that right now, but that is the type of person that we look for. And people all over the country are doing this very same thing, and the whole point of the proclamation is to give this National Service Recognition Day, which is today, April 5th, 2022, some recognition and do the proclamation. So, that's where we're at. Counsel, we're ready for a motion.
We'd move to approve.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation, National Service Day. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have approved that proclamation. Item number four, another proclamation proclaiming April 2022 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month. Attorney Eddington.
Whereas children are our future, no child should suffer abuse and neglect, and whereas victims of child abuse and neglect are known to be at a higher risk for experiencing post-traumatic stress disorder, depression, low academic achievement, drug use, juvenile delinquency, teenage pregnancy, and adult criminality, every child is precious and deserves to grow up in a healthy, safe, nurturing environment free from harmful effects of abuse and neglect, whereas an estimated 1,077 children in Wyoming are victims of abuse and neglect each year, whereas effective child abuse intervention and community prevention programs succeed because of partnerships created among community members, social services, and law enforcement agencies, schools, churches, businesses, and civic organizations, whereas each April, Child Advocacy Centers of Wyoming, the Children's Trust Fund Board, Prevent Child Abuse Wyoming, Wyoming Citizens Review Panel, Wyoming Department of Family Services, Wyoming Office of Attorney General, Division of Victim Services, the Wyoming Guarding and Lightroom Program, the City of Torrington, Wyoming, and other partners join together in effort to prevent abuse and neglect through outreach, education, and intervention. Now, therefore, I, Randy L. Adams, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Torrington, Wyoming, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2022 as Child Abuse Awareness and Prevention Month.
Thank you, Attorney Eddington. Again, something that we need to be very aware of, and something that is a national problem. We pass this proclamation in support of those people who do their job of protecting and helping to prevent child abuse across the country. Counsel, do you have anything you'd like to add?
I would move to approve the proclamation.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the proclamation. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We have approved the proclamation. Item number five is ordinance on third reading. Attorney Eddington relating to penalties and jail.
An ordinance amending and reenacting Sections 9.02.010 and 9.02.011 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to penalties and jail, and no changes and no comments.
Okay. Same as the first reading, same as the second reading. Okay. Counsel, do you have any concerns?
No. I would move to approve this on third reading.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion to approve on third. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item five, penalties and jail ordinance on third reading. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved item five. Item number six, ordinance again on third reading regarding sentencing and hearing. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance creating and enacting Section 9.02.012 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to a sentencing hearing. We did add the last sentence on second reading that just talks about scheduling that hearing. It's important to get this type of information to the court for sentencing purposes. I'll give you a quick example. Today, I was in trial. We had a petition to revoke. I had a criminal history on an individual today. He's doing 120 days in jail today because we were able to provide the court with the right information. Eight DUSs, six invalid insurances, and four invalid registrations, five failed to appear in the last three years. And if we wouldn't have been there to provide that, he probably just would have got a fine and walked.
Good enough. What is the, what is the, excuse me. Go ahead.
No, no, no.
What is the last sentence you said we added?
The last sentence we added, if you recall, Councilman Kelly asked about scheduling, and we just added, "The sentencing hearing shall be scheduled within 30 days of the date of the guilty plea at arraignment, subject to any continuances granted by the court for good cause."
I see. Thank you.
No, I was just telling, Mr. Eddington, well done. That's why we need this.
Okay.
We do.
Questions from the council?
I would move to approve.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance on third reading relating to sentencing hearing. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item number seven, ordinance on second reading, minors and licensed liquor establishments. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting Section 5.12.025 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to minors and licensed liquor establishments.
Okay. Chief Johnson, would you like to comment on any of this? Any changes from the first?
No changes on this ordinance.
No comments, no concerns?
No comments, no concerns.
Very good. Good to hear. Okay. Counsel?
I would move to approve this on second reading.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion to approve on second. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance relating to minors and licensed liquor establishments. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved item seven, minors and licensed liquor establishments. Let's go to item number eight, ordinance on second reading relating to restrictions on possessing and purchasing liquor or malt beverages and entry into liquor establishments. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting Section 9.36.020 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to restriction on possessing and purchasing liquor or malt beverages and entry into liquor establishments.
Thank you. Chief Johnson, any comments here from anybody?
No concerns, no changes.
Okay, enough. Counsel, do you have any concerns? Okay, with that, entertaining a motion.
I would move to approve this ordinance on second reading.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilman Patterson, we appreciate that. We have a motion and a second to approve item eight, restrictions on possessing and purchasing liquor or malt beverages and entry into liquor establishments. Is there further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved item eight. Takes us to item nine, ordinance on second reading relating to the regulation of hours of operations for licensed liquor establishments. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting Section 05.12.030 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to the regulation of hours of operation for licensed liquor establishments.
Okay, thank you. Chief, you got any comments?
We did actually have a change on this ordinance. Mr. Kelly brought up a good point that we should delineate between our package sale convenience stores that are open online and traditional liquor license. Miss Sylvia did a great job helping us to come up with some wording that addresses that appropriately, and so we think we've been able to clarify that under 1ai and 2ai, which essentially allows for retail licenses that are used in package sale only, and remain open for sale if it's other than alcohol or exempt from having alcohol in the store by 2:30 in the morning.
Good enough.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Good job.
Any questions from the council? Thanks, Sylvia. Okay, item nine, entertaining a motion.
I'd move to approve this ordinance on second reading.
Councilman Kenny, thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve item nine, regulation of hours of operations for licensed liquor establishments. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. We have approved item nine on second. Item number 10, ordinance on second reading relating to the regulation of solid waste in the city of Torrington. Attorney Eddington.
An ordinance amending and reenacting Chapter 8.28 of the Torrington Municipal Code 2022 revisions relating to the regulation of solid waste in the city of Torrington.
Thank you. This was a rather extensive ordinance, and tried to clear up, I think, some of the inconsistencies of the previous ordinance. We have Superintendent of Streets and Sanitation Ed Holly is here, and Chief Johnson. Either of you?
I'm good with it now.
Okay. You know, this is, this is a lot of ordinance, and so as we were putting it together, there was a number of comments that came in that were worthy of some additional work after the first reading. Mr. Estes brought up a great point on page two under Section 828, 070, certain waste prohibited under 1ai. We did a little bit of better clarification on what incidental use actually looks like so that we can address that appropriately. We want folks to be able to use our garbage facilities for incidental use in public spaces. That's how you don't get litter in your parks and every other place that we try to keep nice and looking good around our community. So, we tried to clean that language up a little bit. No pun intended. Go ahead.
I have a question on number three, and it may be a style thing as much as anything, and I wasn't sure. and I wasn't sure. Incidental does not include, I wonder if that should be incidental use, does not include since it's, the phrase incidental use is used in the two previous ones.
Yeah, that's worth adding. We can make that change for third reading easily.
Doesn't change the meaning, but it just.
Sure. Sure, sure. The second change Ed helped with, it was under 828130, which is your third page down under number one. That paragraph was really quite confusing, and it probably was the result of multiple interpretations that had had slight amendments down over the years. So Ed and I got together and kind of worked to clean that up and put that in a place where we think it's understandable and that anybody could read the ordinance and know what they were expected of. And then the final change was with the help, well, actually, forgive me, on page four at the top, we did have a discussion about a hand pickup charge under number three. And that's really related to if, if Ed's staff have to stop what they're doing and pick up trash out of the alley that someone has thrown in the alley, or someone has thrown on the front of their home on the street, what have you, if you're looking at the smaller dumpster pickup, that there could be a fee assessed for that type of inconvenience. And that ranges anywhere from, you know, just a few seconds of a stop where the operator has to get out of the vehicle and take care of something, all the way up to something that could take feasibly hours of work for Ed and his team to take care of. So that would be a sliding scale based on the amount of effort they had to invest.
So I just have a question on how this, let's say that the, the trash can blows open and it, and stuff blows out. Are we going to offer a, like a warning or talk with the homeowner or do something before we apply that charge? Like, I'm hoping we.
Our hope and our intent, and I know from talking to Ed with his team as well, we always look for the lowest means of getting what we're looking for. I mean, certainly, we can cite under this ordinance, we may have to cite under this ordinance, but our hope was that we never have to.
Okay.
And we normally are able to get pretty good cooperation by having a conversation with folks, but occasionally, there are folks who aren't willing to be respectful of their neighbors and respectful of the cost that the city has to incur to maintain a garbage service. And so when that happens, we need to have that fairly clearly delineated so that that's taken care of.
I think another related scenario with those, a lot of, I share a dumpster with two neighbors at least, you know, and so it's hard to pinpoint who, who the culprit is sometimes, but except we can't write an ordinance that would cover everything. It just, I think this is a, a good approach and a good faith one. I do have a question, and maybe I missed it in here, and I've always been, this is more for Ed because I've always just been curious about this. So you'll see where somebody, for whatever reason, decides to throw out a couch, and obviously, it isn't going to fix and fit in the dumpster, and so they park it right next to the dumpster. How, how are those handled? Would this cover something like that, or?
Right now, we, unless we can catch them, we really don't know who to put it there.
Yeah, yeah, that's kind of the same with, you can narrow it down to three or four houses, maybe, and.
Yeah, not really.
What I do is, we usually have a slow day, and we just send a guy out, a couple guys with a truck and start picking up mattresses and.
Okay, I, I just always wondered what happened and who said you could throw those there, but I, I know that's a common practice where they.
Happens quite often.
Or they lean it up against the dumpster.
Yep.
So, okay, then.
And it is just as easy to take it to the baler and dump it there. I mean, I've had things like that I've had to do, and it's very easy to do.
Especially the folks with the rollouts, you know, they obviously don't, but yeah, they just parked it. If you put it on the curb and put a sign that says free, it's amazing, it will disappear.
It will disappear, yes, pretty quick.
But that's awful.
Counselman, if I could add just real quick on that, we're going to do everything we can to support Ed and his team on that. We have a pretty fantastic code enforcement officer that may be sitting right here behind me, and is willing to do some follow-up, and it's amazing what you can find out when you go talk to a couple of neighbors and get a little perspective on what's going on there. And we hope that never happens, but we also know that it's not fair to everybody in that neighborhood who now has to pay additional costs, or our whole community that pays additional costs when that sort of a thing happens on a regular basis.
Well, and I think having the ordinance in effect can provide that nudge where you don't necessarily have to take enforcement action. It's, you know, it's a discretionary thing, but it's, it's there if it's needed, and it's also a nudge for somebody saying, you know, you're breaking the city ordinance when you do this, so here's what we need you to do, and hopefully it can be solved, and yeah.
Amy's been a great help because we've had some issues in some trailer parks and.
Yeah.
She's made some contacts and saved us a lot of work.
I think apartment buildings and things, just places where people are sharing dumpsters, no one takes responsibility, it seems. Okay.
Ed, otherwise, are you satisfied with the way we have this put together at this point?
Yes, I am.
So this is second reading, so we'll get one more opportunity to fix it, so if anything comes up, you know, guys talk about it, and hopefully, we can have it ready for the next time.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it. A lot of work, I know.
Yeah, thank you for that.
I would move to approve on second reading.
Thank you. Councilman Patterson, we have a motion to approve on second. Is there a second?
All second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. A motion and a second to approve item 10, regulation of solid waste in the city of Torrington. Further discussion?
This is the whole chapter, is that correct, Mr. Eddington?
Correct. Instead of section, includes all sections in that chapter.
This is a lot of work, so thank you all for your efforts. That's all.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved item 10. Item number 11, a lease agreement between the city of Torrington and Valley Motorsports. You guys want to come up, please? And while he's doing, Matt, Matt, or Chief, or, excuse me, Jim, you probably have things you might want to say about this.
We were approached by Valley Motorsports a few weeks ago, maybe a month ago by now, probably, regarding the lease of that real property. If you turn, the lease is about four pages. If you turn to exhibit five of that, or page five of that, you see the map, if you will, of some city properties south of Investor Park Drive, which is basically some very bad pasture alkaline area that we use for nothing. And Valley Motorsports has to move out of their area located pretty close to that, and the mayor and I met, and other staff, Mark Weiss was involved, and we didn't see any problem with the lease agreement, obviously subject to council approval. The one requirement, of course, was insurance, and if you go past the map, you see that they've got the insurance through a local agent here, and so that's really all we were after. And then the terms of the lease really speak for themselves. It's an annual lease with the intent certainly to renew. We all, every agreement we have, we terminate after one year with the right to renew. So it's subject to your review and consideration, and any questions for Valley Sports, they're here.
City of, uh, city, does the city of Torrington have any liability problems with that doing this?
We, that's why we have insurance. We also have indemnifying and holding us harmless, and we reserve immunity pursuant to the Governmental Claims Act, and that's as good as we can do.
It sounds like it's a good use of some property that doesn't get used, so.
Try to.
Yeah. So do you have some special things you're going to have to do? Is it, is it pretty level? Does it have?
It's pretty level in there. We're going to cut some trees out. We had a tree service, we contacted a tree service here in town. There's some trees down there that's got some branches that didn't look very good, so we contacted them. They come down, we got, they're going to do some work with us to cut some of the trees to where they're safe, trim them out so they'll go, like they call it the canopy, you know, everything will grow better. On the west side of the property, there's a group of trees in there that we was going to go in and thin out, so we had a little bit more parking in there because they've just pretty much overgrown and the branches are laying on the ground now. We want to go in and clean that all up and, you know, trim it up and make it so we got a little more parking area in there, but other than that, there's not a lot, not, you know, but the grass will all stay in there.
Do you have, is it pretty easy access for you to get in there?
Yes, yep, really nice access right off of, it's the road that would go back to the backside of the baler.
Okay.
So we're going to go in there and we're, we want to replace the fence across the, be the east side of the property. It's pretty bad shape, so we wanted to go in and replace that fence in there, put a double gate in there so we can have plenty of area to turn, because we have semis come in. So we have people from Colorado, South Dakota, Wyoming, Nebraska, that come to our races and stuff.
Do you haul your water any, at the other place anyway? How do you get water?
We got, I got ahold of Ed, and he contacted Tom today. We want to buy the water from the city, so we got in contact with them. They can set me a meter up so I can just shuttle water from right there at the fire hydrant at the baler. They're going to set me a meter right there, and then I'll just buy the water from the city. So.
When do you expect to be able to use this? Good luck.
Hoping for midsummer, but it just depends on how fast that they can get in there and get these trees.
Volunteer help trying to get it done.
We do. We have a heck of a group of people that come in, and we wanted to buy the property to the east of, well, it's where the sewer ponds are at, the east of there, but the people put a pretty stiff price on it, so we couldn't afford that, so that's why we decided to move. This isn't quite as big as what we wanted, but I think we can make it work and utilize, you know.
Oh, good. Looks like a lot of fun.
Well, we, we, we enjoy it. I mean, me and my boys have done it for a lot of years. We put races on now and during Bike Week in Sturgis, we have races up there now. We used to put the races on down at the Scottsburg County Fair. They opened up a new motorsports park in Cheyenne. They called us and wanted us to go over there and put some races on, so.
Bet you guys are becoming the experts, huh?
Well, we've done it, done it a few times, so it's, it helps.
Very good. Sounds like a good project. Hope it works out for you.
Me, too.
So is this a summer, fall activities?
Just summer.
Just summer, okay. Sounds interesting. My son would love it. He drives his truck through every mud hole he can find.
We have, we're getting quite a few high school kids that like to do it, and that's kind of the reason we, I started it a long time ago. I figured if I can get them to play in the mud, maybe I can keep them off the streets, so.
Sounds good.
Counsel, do you have any further questions?
The only one that comes to my, the first thing, Valley Motorsports, I was wondering who that was, now I know. Yeah, okay, I know those guys.
But we have, we have rules. Nobody can start a vehicle before 8 o'clock in the morning, and nobody can start one after a certain time at night, because we know the motel's right across the highway.
My only question is noise complaints, and, okay.
We, and we checked with both people, property owners on both sides, they're okay with it. And that's about, there's nobody that lives down there, I mean, so.
It just seems like you said a good use of bad land, because you can't grow potatoes there. It's a pretty, pretty rough country, so.
We've held, we've, we've actually held some national races. I'm vice president of the Mud Racers Association, which is United States everywhere, and we've actually had people all the way out here from West Virginia.
Wow.
So, yeah, cool.
Brings in people.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Every time you have a race and you bring in a whole bunch of people, those people buy gas, they buy food at the restaurants, some of them stay overnight.
We contact the motels and try to get group rates if people need to, you know, not everybody has a camper, so.
Good for the community.
Motels and.
Good.
With everybody.
Okay. Counsel?
I would move to approve the lease agreement.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
All second.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the lease agreement between the city of Torrington and Valley Motorsports. Further discussion? You guys have any questions?
Thank you very much.
There's no further discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. Good luck.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Item 12 is deleted. Moving to item 13, the waiving of nepotism policy at the pool, and Clerk Treasurer Strucker, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So last year, we had the same discussion. It's almost impossible for the seasonal employees at the pool not to have a brother or sister or cousin or somebody who's related who works there, and we'd like to just ask to waive the policy again this year for that purpose, so.
Kind of a natural thing. You get one person has a lifeguard, pretty soon, the younger brother or sister wants to be a lifeguard and.
And it's not easy to find lifeguards.
It isn't, and, you know, we encourage the, the schedulers of the, the pool to try to schedule them at different times, but it's just hard, so we'd like to go ahead and waive it if we can.
It, it seems like this is the sort of thing that the pool manager.
Right.
Can manage at that level and.
Right.
Keep people apart, or there's conflict, or can manage that as it comes up.
I hope so, yes.
And we've talked about them not being able to supervise. I don't remember exactly how we phrased it last year, but it was like they couldn't supervise their sibling, I mean, something like that. I don't remember exactly what the wording was, but, and I'm assuming they would be able to handle that with the supervisor, with the pool managers.
That's why we're waiving it, though, is because it's sometimes impossible to do that.
And if the siblings don't get along, my point was the manager can step in.
Right. And we do have an assistant manager who can step in as well.
Put them on different days.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel, do you have any other concerns? If not, I entertain a motion.
I would move to approve the nepotism policy, waiving the nepotism policy for the swimming pool employees.
Thank you, Councilman Kenny. Is there a second?
All second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. A motion and a second to waive the nepotism policy for swimming pool employees. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed, so on.
Did I jump over you, Council?
No.
Oh, okay. I thought.
We were arguing.
Oh.
Kids behave. All right, moving to item 14, swimming pool rates, and that looks like it's mine, and it's a pretty simple change. Basically, we've applied the same rates that we had at the swimming pool last year with one exception, and that is, last year, the rate for a family under, for or under in the family was $160. For a family with five or more, it was $180. What we changed this year is that rather than it be $180 for a family of five or more, it is now 200. And it actually makes more sense because basically, it says for every member of the family, it's a $40 fee. And, you know, if a family has 15 kids, well, we lose a little money, but at the same time, at least we have some kind of a way of controlling that. So the only change is to add $20 to the five and more family member fee. Otherwise, it's the same as last year. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I would move to approve.
Councilman Patterson, thank you. A motion to approve the swimming pool rates for 2022. Is there a second?
All second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve the rates. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Aye opposed. We have approved the rates. Item number 15 is to approve the bills from 31622 to April 522. Clerk Treasurer Strucker.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have several bills here for your approval tonight, both handed out with your agenda and an additional set.
both handed out with your agenda and an additional set, I'd be glad to answer any questions, I did already answer some questions for Councilman Kenny, if you have any further questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
I did have a question, I just wanted to know what the absolute solutions, that encoder, what that was for, on the, on the first page of the first set. Is that you?
It's ten fifty-five, so that would be. Lance, fire.
It's expensive.
Sorry, Lance.
So that was for programming the radio and the new tower truck.
Okay.
So it's, with the trunk system and everything, have to have computer software, and we get it from Cheyenne, we have to get approval for it, and then, so, Absolute was the ones that could come up and plug it into the radio.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Yep.
And then I just had one more, the, on the ninth page of the first set, Stuart Erby, what are those cabinets for?
That's for the electrical department, for all that conduit.
Those are, those are electrical cabinets, I'm assuming.
Yes, yes, okay.
You might notice on page ten, due to some issues we had last year when we had a swimming pool inspection, and we temporarily failed that inspection because we didn't have drinking fountains, in our pool meeting this year, the item came up, building official Estes took that upon himself to get that squared away, we got two drinking fountains ready to go, I don't think they're mounted yet, but, but they will be, so solve that problem. Thank you for doing that.
I would move to approve.
Councilman Patterson, thank you, we have a motion to approve the bills, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you, we have a motion and a second to approve the bills, is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We have approved the bills. Item number sixteen is public comment, this is a time where if anybody in the viewing area would like to comment to the council, ask a question, complain, whatever, you know, if anybody has something they'd like to say to the council, this is a good time to do it, if you do so, we'd like you to come to the podium and try to limit your discussion to a couple of minutes, and then we'll try to respond to whatever we have. So is there anybody in the audience tonight who would like to speak? Come on up, sir. Very much appreciate you coming, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much, it's the first time, I'm very Dutch, I live here now for a year, just over a year in Torrington, with my American wife from Torrington, this is the first time that the mayor welcomed me in a presentation like this, and I told you, well, I'm not sure, exactly sure what I should talk about, but during this meeting, I thought, well, the recognition, recognition of people that save lives every day, I get, I get goosebumps just thinking about that, the working with your local community, and I'm from close to Amsterdam, Gouda, or Gouda, as we call it, which is a small Dutch city, which is already bigger than Cheyenne. It's way more personal here, it's a little bit slower, I like that, so it's just heartwarming to see what's going on here, makes me feel well, and that's what I want to say.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for what you had to say, appreciate that.
Sure, thanks for having me.
I don't, I don't, I didn't introduce you, did I? This is Councilwoman Kate Steinbach.
Hi, how are you?
Councilwoman Rick Patterson.
Your face is at EWC at the wall.
Yes, it is.
Right.
Yeah, you're observing, yeah, it's in the post office, too.
I wanna, I wanna check down there, chief, just.
Councilman Ted Kenny, and the person who is absent, Councilman Dennis Kelly, and clerk treasurer Lynette Stricker, director of public works, Jeff Harkins, attorney Jim Eddington, chief of police Matt Johnson, I can do the whole thing. In the back corner, back by where you're sitting, is our superintendent of streets and sanitation, Ed Hawley, our fire chief.
Everyone knows each other.
Back here is our fire chief Lance Petch, our building official Dennis Estes, our technical person over here who's putting us on K U S Sports, that's Ryan Cate, this is Tyler Martino, I know I'm gonna mispronounce your names.
From Maine, right?
Yeah, and our deputy clerk Sylvia Naya, and I think I got everybody, didn't I?
We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
I'm terrible with names, so come take me at least another year or two where I get to know you all, but just, thank you for welcoming me and your.
Come back.
Yes, welcome to Torrington.
Welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, at this point, I have to turn it over to, well, no, I don't, not yet. Mr. Petch, do you have anything you'd like to add tonight?
I can come in.
Okay.
How's the truck running?
Good.
Good.
At this point, I have to turn this over to Councilman Kenny.
Well, I had to, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
And counsel, for indulging me for just a few moments, my alma mater ended up winning the tournament last night, Monday night was a very trying time, especially the first half, and after that, it seemed like they actually played their game, and ended up beating North Carolina, the Tar Heels, by coming, overcoming a fifteen-point deficit at halftime, and they ended up winning by three. So, of course, there was a lot of excitement and frustration first, but then excitement at home, because Doty and I both are graduate alumni of university.
We could hear you.
I'm sure you could, and I'm sure everybody was holding their ears. But the men's basketball tournament was just, it was awesome this year, it was a lot of fun, a lot of great, close games, everybody played well, it was, it was really fun. The other part of that, though, I think, if you didn't watch the women's tournament, you missed a lot of really good basketball also, because they were, there were some fantastic games, and South Carolina's Gamecocks, the women's basketball team, ended up winning the national title by beating the Yukon Huskies, and, which was, I think, a surprise to almost everybody, since their Huskies coach was eleven and oh, but there were some spectacular games on both sides with that, so it was a lot of fun, and I know Mayor Adams and I talked about it today for quite a few minutes, because it was just fun to watch, and now I'm trying to figure out what I'm gonna do, I'm gonna have to get into my city stuff more, I think, now, so now that I have time to do that, but thank you, mayor, for the opportunity to speak and to bring my paraphernalia, I have more, but I left it at home.
Actually, the conversation wasn't bearable, I expected it to be worse, but it was fine, so, thank you, Councilman Kenny.
I was sweating bullets.
Anyone else? Okay, with that, we have an executive session, so I appreciate a motion at this point to adjourn from our regular session, and it'll be adjourned for about, I don't know, three or four, five minutes, and then we'll come back in and an executive session. Is there a motion?
I would move into executive session.
A motion by Councilman Patterson for us to move into executive session, is there a second?
I'll second.
Councilwoman Steinbach, thank you, we have a motion and a second to adjourn regular session and move into an executive session, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll take about a three-minute break, and then we'll be back here in an executive session.